Welcome to the Planning Board meeting of Tuesday, April 23rd, 2024. We call the meeting to order at 7:06 PM. If we would all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let me find my public hearing notes. Our first order of business this evening is a public hearing to adopt stormwater regulations to supplement General Bylaw 9.6, Stormwater Management and Land Disturbance Bylaw, in order to comply with the EPA's Order for Compliance under Section 309 of the Clean Water Act. The Board will also set a fee structure as referenced in, excuse me, Section 9.6.6.F. Point F. Point 1. Point H of the Land Disturbance Bylaw. A copy of the draft regulations prepared by Town Council are on file at the Office of the Town Clerk, the Permitting Office, and on the town's website at www.carvermass.gov/ slash PlanningBoard slash Draft Stormwater Regulations. You see, we have a guest this evening, Mr. Bott?
Yes, if I may, Mr. Chair. Tom Bott, I'm the Town Planner here in Carver, Mass. So with us tonight is Alex Wessex from Town Council, who has been assisting us in complying with the stormwater regulations, and Andy Gleins, who is our regular reviewer of projects. We have retained Andy as well on this because there are a myriad of stormwater regulations in town, some of which we just found out about the other day that Andy sent me, and we had no idea. The Board of Health has some of those. With us tonight also is Kevin Ford from the Board of Health, because the Board of Health was discussing this earlier this evening as well. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Council to sort of give us the lowdown on why we are here and having this hearing and looking at adopting these regulations this evening.
Sure, thank you, Tom, and through you, Mr. Chairman, Alex Weissite from KP Leoff. Appreciate everyone taking the time to speak with me this evening about these proposed stormwater management regulations. So in terms of the question of why we're here, all municipalities in the Commonwealth are subject to what's called a small MS4 permit, which is issued by the US EPA. And that permit has certain requirements that need to be met in terms of managing stormwater that enters the various stormwater management systems that are maintained by the town. And, you know, as an extension of that, most municipalities throughout the state have, over the past few years, adopted stormwater management bylaws and associated regulations. And US EPA has actually proposed and prepared sort of sample bylaws and regulations to assist communities with implementing bylaws and regs that are, that include the sort of minimum requirements that EPA wants to see in these local regs. So, you know, the town did receive a notice of noncompliance from EPA, and there were a couple of specific issues that were referenced in that letter. The main issue that I spot and that EPA identified was a lack of post-construction regulation of sites that have, you know, a potential stormwater runoff concern. Usually that's accomplished, let's call them an O&amp;M plan, Operation and Maintenance Plan. For larger developments, those will be recorded in the Registry of Needs, and, you know, they have certain annual or semi-annual reporting requirements so that, you know, there are safeguards in place for after, you know, a project is developed to ensure that there are, you know, stormwater issues after the development is in place, and that if there are, there are safeguards in place to address that. So the draft regulations that you have before you, I based those off of EPA's sample model regulations and tried to make them as consistent with your bylaws as I could. You'll note there are certain areas where I left comments indicating that there are policy determinations for your Board to make in terms of whether or not to apply certain sections. So probably would make sense for us to kind of work our way through those. Tom, is the Board's consultant here? Is he probably better qualified than I am to talk through some of the technical aspects of this?
Yes, Andy Gleins from Fussin' O'Neil, the Board's consultant here. Sitting right behind me, right?
Okay, hi, how are you?
Very good.
Good. All right, so did you have any comments, Andy?
Yes, Andy Gleins with Fussin' O'Neil, Town's Civil Engineering Consultant. I started to review the draft regulation and, as well as the existing various town regulations that reference stormwater management, and I'm working on a draft recommendation memo to kind of compile all those thoughts, but I can speak to some of those this evening. Essentially, there's references throughout multiple town regulations between what's on the Board of Health page, zoning bylaws, subdivision rules and regs, and the town general bylaws, which Town Council was referring to, and really where this all stemmed from is the MS4 Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System Requirements from EPA. But ideally, I recommend that the town takes this opportunity to try to reconcile some of the other discrepancies in town regulation beyond what I think needs kind of the short-term need to address the noncompliance issuance from EPA. So I certainly don't need to go into too much technical detail this evening. I can issue the formal memo to summarize all that, but I'm certainly here this evening to go into as much detail as the Town Planner, Town Council, and Planning Board would like me to.
Please, Mr. Bott.
And so one of the things that I asked Andy to look at for us, it, as we talked about, this pertains to stormwater systems that are maintained by a town. And in a rural community like Carver, to what extent are developments impacting the municipal stormwater system as it exists, where we've got catch basins in public ways? For the most part, when we do subdivision plans, when we do site plans, we review the stormwater regulations, and our goal is always to maintain that, I don't want to say hydrology, that's the wrong word, but essentially, I explain it as if six buckets of water leave a site before it's disturbed, six buckets of water should leave the site after, no more, no less. So to what extent, because we are capturing additional stormwater that's produced on-site, on that site, we have them do infiltration basins, we have them do catch basins to capture their stormwater and keep it off the site. So we see some percentage that comes from driveways and things like that, but we do our very best to maintain any of that stormwater out of the public realm and keep it onto the private property. So one of the questions in looking through this and looking through our regulations is, is how often is this actually invoked under our regulations? And the Council's point and EPA's concern is, what are we doing post-construction to make sure those things are taken care of in place? So from the big picture, you know, how much municipal stormwater system do we have? How much are we being impacting it when we're trying to keep all those, all that water on their site, on their private sites? So those are the things that I've been sorting through, and one of the reasons I ask Andy to sit on us and help us fare through these various things. Before we get too deep into all the conflicting sort of regulations that Andy talked about, maybe if we could hear for a couple seconds from Kevin Ford from the Board of Health, because some of these stormwater regulations are in the Board of Health, and I think the Board met earlier this evening?
Yeah, we, we had that.
Do you want, introduce yourself, please, for our minute table?
Sure. Kevin Ford, COT for Board of Health. So we have had for a number of years, well beyond when I started, they had created some additional regulations related to stormwater runoff. One of the things that they adopted was, for instance, the rainfall amounts using the Cornell Atlas. And then we had other guidance in there. They've been basically ignored for a number of years, quite simply. And so toward that end, I recommended to the Board tonight to abolish them, abandon them, walk away from them, whatever you want to say. So that, those regulations will be taken off the website, and they'll no longer be in existence, so.
Will these be superseding regulations? The ones that are being proposed?
No, well, the Board of, the Board of Health would just simply recognize these as being the regulations. There would be no need for us to have anything additional to that.
Excellent.
Yeah, and if I may, I wanted to mention the conversations I had with Kevin. In places I've been before, I've not actually seen the Board of Health have an interest in stormwater, because it's more of a conservation and planning sort of thing. The Board of Health is more about septic and things like that. So it was sort of an odd fit for me that there were stormwater regulations in the Board of Health, and that there were five pages I had never seen before. Thank you, Andy, for pointing that out to us. So it's sort of an outlier that the Board of Health is engaged in stormwater management here in Carver. And so we're just trying to right the ship, make sure the EPA and the folks who are doing business are happy with us, and that we've got a cohesive set of plans and regulations that make sense, and that we can actually administer.
And standardized pretty much throughout the state at this point. All right, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. Should we discuss some of the determinations?
Yes, I think, Mr. Chair, it might make sense to go through some of the policy determinations for the Board to make. First one I'm seeing is on page, sorry, page?
Page four?
No.
Page?
Page four.
Yep.
In the definitions, there was a reference to offsite compliance, and there are other references to this issue of offsite mitigation, other sections of a lot of them. So it's a policy choice for the Board to decide, you know, whether or not you're willing to accept offsite mitigation as a potential source of mitigation for projects that are, you know, creating a lot of new impervious surface or are contributing, you know, significant amounts of runoff. It's up to you whether or not you would be willing to accept offsite mitigation as a potential means of.
Now, what exactly do you mean by? Pollutant removal practices in regards to our infiltration basins or? Please, Mr. Gleins.
Andy Gleins. So it would be allowing potential applicants to address the, really, the water quality treatment from impervious surfaces, not necessarily on the site or that they own or that they're applying for. It could be potentially a site that the same owner owns elsewhere in town, or it could be through an agreement with the Town Operation Maintenance Department where they would treat some other stormwater runoff from an impervious surface, like a road, and in lieu of treating impervious surfaces on their site that they are proposing the site improvements on. Some states, other states, Massachusetts included, and other municipalities allow this, where it allows opportunity for potentially areas in town that have higher pollutant loads to be treated in lieu of treating impervious surfaces that may not necessarily have the same treatment benefit. So for example, if you're treating a new building roof runoff, in general, pollutant loads from roof runoff are less than pollutant loads from a roadway that receives sand and salt in the wintertime. So if the town and the developer would agree to install stormwater management for a section of road in town that was directly adjacent to a wetland or other surface water body, that would potentially provide more of a benefit to the stormwater quality in the town as opposed to just treating roof runoff for one individual project. So that's just a general example of how that could potentially be utilized, and as Town Council mentioned, it would be up to the town and the Board on whether or not they would want to leave that as an option open in the regulation. I personally would recommend leaving it in as an option, but I think the town should be specific about how they're qualifying, when that option can be utilized, and, you know, what the other restrictions would be for that.
Would this put a strain on our roadway systems or drainage systems, or would that require further work from the town in order to clean these up?
All the above are potential. So it would be a situation where you wouldn't want to have a private developer installing stormwater management components within a town right of way, and then having the town have to maintain those unless, you know, there was certain circumstances where the town benefit was justified to, you know, take on that maintenance. So that's why be cautious of when that option could be executed, but I think there may be instances in town where it could be beneficial to the town in general.
Can we put it in as a variance? Would that be an issue?
Well, first of all, we're not going to call it a variance, because a variance has a specific term.
Right.
But I think Andy's point is that, you know, we should leave it in as an option, but consider it as, excuse me, thank you. We would leave it in as an option, but consider it as a particularly limited option. Obviously, we want someone who's developing the site to maintain their business on-site. And the more far field we get from that, the more complex it gets to regulate, particularly in a, you know, in a smaller town. We're not a city, we don't have, you know, much folks running around and taking care of things. So I think it's always to have that flexibility, but also at the same time, you know, try to keep it as straightforward as possible.
So something like along the lines of approval through the DPW as a requirement, along with recommendations from the DPW, and the developer assumes all costs of maintenance, upkeep in regards to a particular, whatever this particular basin is, that would take some of the cost away from the town and the risk? Does that sound reasonable? So we should leave it in with conditions of that?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair, I think a situation like that, it depends on the project, but there, I tend to agree that it's better to have that flexibility and not. So I don't see a downside to including it as a pendulum action. It's not something the Board, you know, needs to accept on a regular basis, but in a specific situation, it might be beneficial to have it there.
And some sort of language to limit it, maybe to?
If I may?
Please, oh, wait, I'm sorry.
Oh.
Do you?
Oh, sorry. We're talking about having, you know, bringing this option of having, of allowing these, for lack of a better term, drains, road drains, to be installed away from a developer's location, and then we're going to ask them to maintain it indefinitely?
It's their, yes.
Charge them, charge them to maintain it indefinitely?
I would think that's their responsibility. If it's on-site, it would be their responsibility. If it's off-site?
So what happens when they go belly up? Or the customers, or the, they sell the company or whatever?
I suppose a bond would have to be established in order to make sure that the upkeep, maintenance, and probably testing in regards to making sure that what comes out is appropriate. I'm not particularly in favor of it myself. I see a lot of drawbacks, but on the other hand, I see that it does open up, it allows options, and if we limit it?
Yeah, because I see the few of these things, and I'm guessing that these are the, what are installed in certain, in certain areas where it basically looks like, in the, in the town of Boston, just a regular culvert concrete hole in the wall in the, in the road that every, that the water pours into, along with needles and leaves and crap load of dirt.
Right.
That are always caught, that are always.
That's part of my issues with that.
Yeah, that they're always clogged.
Now, there's my point. If the place goes belly up, you're SOL, so to speak.
Right, now, I tend to agree with you. Who's going to maintain it if?
As far as putting a bond for perpetuity, how do you judge that? It's not going to be there for the next 50 years. How do you, you know, it's.
Right, right. So.
We're a small town, let's, you know.
I see everybody's point.
If I may, Mr. Chair, just to definitely understand the Board's concerns with long-term maintenance of what I'd say is a structural BMPs, catch basins, detention basins and the like, there is a possibility that there would be a situation where off-site stormwater treatment could be done through removal of impervious cover or other, what's typically referred to as low-impact design approaches, that wouldn't require a structural BMP that would need long-term maintenance. So I guess the current definition in the proposed regulation doesn't specify that it would need to be a specific stormwater management, best management practice. So again, I, you know, if the Board wanted to restrict no installation of what I define as structural BMPs or best management practices off-site, which potentially would create long-term maintenance concerns, I would still recommend leaving open off-site treatment where there might be other ways where you could improve the water quality of the watershed without installing stormwater management practices that require maintenance.
Now, would these be filtered of pollutant matter before they reach this point, or are they, is the whole filtering system done throughout?
So I guess a specific example would be if there was impervious cover, I don't know, maybe there's a access road or something that's no longer utilized, and that access road could be removed and revegetated to its natural state. Removing that impervious cover and revegetating it would improve the water quality runoff in that subwatershed area. Or there might be other instances where maybe there is a town-owned structural best management practice that the town hasn't been able to repair or upkeep on their own, and then having a applicant improve or replace that could be a way to improve the stormwater quality as well, where, you know, it wouldn't be transferring maintenance requirements from, you know, private entity to a public entity. It may just be the private entity helping out the public entity with making sure that they can maintain their current infrastructure. So like I said before, there's a lot of variables, and it would be up to the Stormwater Authority to make those determinations on a case-by-case basis. So I don't know, I guess, I think some more discussion on how to limit the options, so the town isn't opening the door too much, but I would leave the door open for the possibility of some off-site treatment.
Do you think you might have some recommendations, not tonight, but when you come back with your assessment of this, that could limit it to the long-term costs and issues associated with this?
Yeah.
Not going to be borne by the town?
Yeah, I can certainly weigh in and recommend some language. I would also recommend relying on Town Council for kind of more the legal aspect of that, but.
Because it should be a very narrow lane, in my opinion.
Agreed. And as the Town Planner, Mr. Bott, mentioned earlier, it would be preferable for developers to obviously start with treating on their individual lots, but.
Right, it shouldn't, it should, the totality of the pollutant removal practices should not be off-site.
Correct.
All right, Alex. I think we're going on to page six at this point?
All right, yep. So, page six. Okay, yeah, so for waiver requests, it's up to the Board whether or not you'd like to require a public hearing on a determination of whether or not to grant the waiver.
Well, my question would be, we're already required to hold a public hearing in regards to this under Section 5H. On page eight, shall hold a public hearing within 21 days with the receipt of a complete application, so wouldn't it, aren't we holding a public hearing in regards to it anyways?
Yeah, I think, I think it would be consistent to, assuming that there's a waiver that's part of the application. I think it's more common than not to see it just included as part of the public hearing review process, so.
Right.
So, yeah, I think probably would make sense to just keep it as part of the public hearing.
Excellent, because we'll be holding it anyways, and all waivers should be identified in regards to request for.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And now we're on Section 6, fees.
Yes, so normally, normally, the Board's stormwater authorities would maintain a separate fee structure. And I think there's usually a, and Andy, you may be able to think this better than I can, but there's some sort of formula you can use based on the amount of, you know, impervious that's being created that calculates the fees, or how do you normally see the fees laid out? My experience, it's usually.
I'll start with that, so. All righty, I, Andy is an engineer, and I'm a planner. He does math, and I don't. So what I did is I looked to see what other people had done. And so I looked around at a few other places, places who I have a great amount of comfort in the municipality and the people who've created those regulations. And not that it's anywhere near or comparable to here, but the fee schedule that I have plugged in here, I pulled from North Hampton, Mass. There are other places as well that I looked at, but for the sake of.
We represent them as well, so I'm happy to do that.
Yeah, see, and you know, they make much better hires in North Hampton than they do here in Carver. No offense to Andy. Oh, they didn't hire you, they hired me, sorry. But anyhow, so I looked at the fee structure for North Hampton, and there are others as well. And in these, as opposed to a stormwater utility, when you're trying to create a stormwater utility and you're trying to actually calculate through GIS the amount of impervious. and you're trying to actually calculate through GIS the amount of impervious surface, I don't think we're here with the technology to get to that point. But in the case of the fee structure from North Hampton, it talks about, you know, it's a residential unit. You've got one, one unit, one to five acres disturbed. You've got greater than those five acres disturbed, you've got minor residential subdivisions. So in each of those cases, there's a fee structure. In the case of a residential, one unit, one to five acres disturbed, it's a $700 review and inspection fee. And goes on, $1,000 for over that. So this is the fee structure that I put together strictly for the purposes of discussion. And for those folks who are following along, these regulations are posted on our website as well. So the, and I think the magic here in looking at this is at what point does a project that we're going to look at actually trip the threshold for the stormwater regulation? Because we're already reviewing those plans and things like that, so it may be that we are, through the process of site plan review or subdivision, we're looking at those things anyhow. So that fee structure may be, maybe, you know, maybe, you know, a bit of an overreach, maybe we're asking for too much at that point. But I think we look in, drill down into, to what extent are we actually impacting the municipal stormwater thresholds? And that gets back to my initial question is, to what extent are we actually impacting the municipal stormwater system with projects? And at what point goes one of these trip the threshold to have to comply with those regulations? So I'll let Andy handle the math questions.
Yes, Andy Gleins, again, agree with what Mr. Bott said about the fee structure. In general, I don't have any concerns with how this fee structure is outlined. I think it's straightforward for the town and applicants to follow and understand which category the project would fall into where other municipalities might be basing on impervious cover or even flow, stormwater flow discharge to the town system. It gets complicated quickly and then hard to verify as well. So I think the general fee structure outline here seems appropriate. And then, as Mr. Bott mentioned, I'd recommend an exemption on this fee structure for any project that's already being submitted to the town and going to be reviewed under site plan review or special permit or preliminary definitive plan where separate fee structure for those projects to be reviewed, and it's something that Fuston O'Neill, as the town consultant, is going to be looking into anyways, where there's going to be situations where all those projects will be subject under zoning bylaws and subdivision rules and regs will be required to follow the stormwater regs. But there'll be other projects that potentially don't need to go for site plan review, special permit, or subdivision review that would fall under the MS4 requirements. And then this is where, that's where this fee structure would be utilized. But I agree with Mr. Bott, we don't want to preclude applicants and have too many fees stacking up for concurrent reviews of applications. So I'd recommend including that as a clarification on the applicability of the fee structure.
Yes, and I would like to see three examples, and preferably two from our local areas, something like Blimpton or Rochester that don't have municipal waste sites. So we can get a comparative and analysis of it.
As I said, I looked for a few different fee structures. First off, there are two things when I, when I, when I start doing my research, you know, who is it, and it's not just who KP Law is represented by, but you know, what is, what's the product they put out? Because, you know, not everybody is great at this. Some people just snatch stuff off the internet, put their own name on it, and just move on. So when I'm curating my research, I'm looking at who is it and how comparable are they to here? The two places I don't look at for regulations are Nantucket and Cambridge. But the other 349 towns, 59 towns in Massachusetts are game for looking at those sort of structures.
Sure, I'd just like to see a comparative analysis with something local too. North Hampton, I understand, is probably very close in size to us, but geographically it seems rather distant. Any other questions or concerns from the board? So we're on to page. Well, Alex, I'll leave it up to you.
I think, yes, so. This is section seven.
Seven C?
Yes, seven C. So these are some technical performance requirements that, yeah, maybe you're probably better versed in this than I am, but the one that I flagged that I haven't seen consistently is this issue with trees and critical root zone. I just don't know how applicable that would be, or. Andy, if you would like to speak to that.
Yes, Andy Gleins, again. I guess in, in general, the rule of thumb is if you're excavating within the footprint of the tree canopy, then you're most likely impacting the root zone of that tree. So that's kind of the general idea between that critical root zone that's referenced in this section. Obviously, I'm an advocate for saving as many trees as possible, but I will say I don't know if this is an applicable spot to put this type of regulation in the general town regs. I think this might be something that would be more applicable to be added to the subdivision rules and regs and the zoning bylaws as opposed to being under the umbrella of the stormwater regulations.
Because the 10 inches or greater trees are mentioned, or six inches, 10 inches and greater, I mentioned several times in our bylaws, but there's no definition other than we should note where they are on the site plan, and.
Right, and I think it's an issue that's come up, or the discussion that's come up in multiple reviews that the board has seen on, you know, whether or not to grant the waiver on not documenting those trees, and if they are documented, what regulatory action the town has to make decisions based on that information. So I think this type of regulation may help clarify some of that, but I don't believe that it directly ties into the stormwater requirements of this regulation. But I guess I, I don't know the decision process that was made by the initial drafter of this proposed regulation, so.
We can waive any aspect of this as, as the authority, and as the planning board, we oversee both parts of this. And frankly, I would like the clarification, but again, it's up to the board in regards to this, because I believe it, it states that if you can't save the tree, you should be replanting it somewhere else. But I just glanced through it, and I don't see it right now. But some sort of clarification in regards to it, because we've seen too many sites entirely detreed. So I personally am in favor, but I don't know how the rest of the board feels.
Personally, I kind of, I kind of like what Andy was saying on this whole thing, that maybe some of this stuff should be, that this should be more of a subdivision type of regulation, or, you know, in that, in the definitions, whatever, somehow worked into the zoning bylaws or subdivision bylaws. Preferably, I would say, I think probably even the better would be the zoning bylaws as the subdivision bylaws seem to be challenged.
We won't have any chance to address this this year, and.
Correct.
We might never have the chance to address it again, so I think it's important. We can always transfer it from one to the other at a later date and put it under the zoning bylaws, but I think it's important to get clarification in regards to this to help certainly maintain the rural character of the town plus carbon sequestration, and it's listed under general performance standards for all sites, so. It would be relevant. But yes, I would agree that maybe next year we look at, if we're, if we can, transferring it over to more of a zoning bylaw. But I think, I would think it would be important to get it on the books.
So the question I have with this whole package, is this something that we need to vote on at town meeting to adopt? And giving it that, giving it the weight of law? Or is it something that we adopt as a board, kind of like this, the subdivision rules, where developers come in and challenge us when they don't like something?
So if I may, so these are regulations, not bylaws. So stormwater regulations, subdivision regulations are passed by the board out of town meeting. So that's why we post a hearing. It's the same process if we were doing zoning, except those regulations are created by the planning board. So our stormwater regulations that we're talking about tonight are subdivision regulations that we work under on a regular basis. The planning board can do those at their leisure, whenever they want. They don't go to town meeting. Only zoning bylaws, only general bylaws go to town meeting. Regulations are the planning board's game.
And currently, we're in non-compliance with the EPA requirement to have some form of, something similar to this, correct?
Yes, they sent a lovely letter.
Alex, I could hear you in the background there, forgive me, but I can't see you all at times, so.
Yeah, no, I appreciate, I agree completely with Tom. That was a spot-on summary. It's, the board is acted under the authority of the existing stormwater bylaw to implement these regulations. And there's a specific provision in the bylaw to give you that authority.
All right. Further questions?
All right, so just for a summary on this section. So we talked about that, you know, Andy was thinking maybe this isn't the best spot for this, perhaps better than the subdivision regulations. So maybe we'll look at, you know, trimming back some of this language, it's my tree.
I would, I would keep it all in there and worry about transferring it over to a different section of the bylaws. Again, this isn't something we'll be able to address, and it really defines why so many other regulations in the town refer to tree size, six and 10 inches and greater, and the importance to them, but it doesn't give us a direction to go with it. I mean, why would they put, have to, we'll be looking at it later tonight. Why are they required to mark the 10-inch or greater if there's no, if there's no, nothing to do with it? Just, we're not just marking it for the fun of it, we're not asking the applicants to do that. But it gives the board, again, we can waive it, or we can move it next year, but this might be the board's only chance to address this and to define it and its importance in the town. But again, we will be continuing the hearing, so there will be further discussion. If any, we can continue it, but we will be addressing it again at the next public hearing when we decide, we'll vote on each of the individual ones and decide where we're going with it. There's no further questions or concerns?
All right, I think, are we ready to move on to the next?
Yes, sir.
All right. So, I think the next one is page 10, and I believe referencing cold water fisheries. Wasn't sure if there are any areas in town where this might apply.
Currently, there's none, right.
So I'm not a fisherman, except on the internet. And went and looked at the mapping that's been done. So there are two cold water fisheries in Wareham directed to the south of us. There are none in Carver.
Okay, great.
But it doesn't mean that they might not come along at some point, correct?
Cold water fishery is something you maintain, not necessarily something you create. And you maintain a cold water fishery by making sure you have adequate stormwater regulations and erosion controls up the hill. Because the hotter the water is, it hedges that stream, that's what creates, that's what destroys a cold water fishery. So as long as we're making sure that we're not accepting that's tributary to that, and I want to say, most of what I saw without, you know, putting my waders on and taking a walk, which I love to do, were more of wetland areas to get you from where we're at to the tributaries, the headwaters of those cold water fisheries in Wareham.
Now, where are they located in Wareham?
Patterson Brook and, and another one. I'll figure that out for you as we're talking about.
Nothing with a direct connection, but.
Yeah, Red Brook, thank you. Did I have that in there? Look at me. I like you. Yes, thank you, Andy. Yeah, so cold water fisheries, Patterson Brook and Red Brook are both south in the town of Wareham.
And we don't have a direct connection to the, to them?
It looks like we've got a lot of marshes and a lot of bogs in between them.
Okay. So it's superfluous at this time?
I would venture to say.
So, sorry, for you, Mr. Chair, are we thinking we can take out this, this reference?
I would venture to say.
It would be likely, but until our next meeting, we'll vote on everything individually, but I don't see anybody.
With regards to, with regards to all that, we're going to have to go through all this again? We have the potential for, the potential for two new members?
It is what it is. We should, I certainly want to see Mr. Gleins' recommendations in regards to it, and that's the big.
You have a majority of people that are here now, they're one way or the other.
Right. Yep.
I don't think you have to go through the whole thing again.
All right, so.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if I could, I think it would be best for us to try to get a more finalized.
Narrow it down.
With no comments or anything that the board can vote on officially as the new set of the regulations. So I think it makes sense for us to, you know, get a, try to get a sense of where the board is at on these policy questions, and then, you know, a combination of Andy and Tom, and I can work on their polishing up of our finalized draft for the board to vote on at any next meeting.
Well, we can discuss it, we don't have to vote on it. Personally, I think it's a little superfluous. The cold water fisheries issue, but again.
It's a deal breaker.
But again, if we're going to discuss it, we should discuss it. Your thoughts on it, Mr. Williams?
It's not going to be here, it doesn't matter if it's in there and it's useless, it's in there and it's useless.
Yep.
If it's in there and it's not in there and it's useless, then it's still useless.
Your thoughts on it?
I think it's good that we're getting council to back us up and explain this to us, because we need these in order to determine going forward that we're doing things the right way.
Yes. Do you feel this particular section on cold water fisheries is relevant to the town of Carver? Is the question. Just your thoughts on it, we're not voting, we're having a general discussion.
No, this is obviously the first that I've had a chance to take a look at this. And just looking over it quickly, I like what I see. I'm okay with it.
Okay with it being in, or? Okay with it being in, or?
Okay with it being in.
Okay. Thoughts, Ms. Sardillo?
I don't understand why it would be in there if we don't have cold water fisheries.
Okay, so did, okay, you don't feel it's particularly relevant?
Right.
Ms. Gasky?
I agree. You know, we, we've got enough laws and electrons being used to write things down. They're getting, they're getting more and more scarce, so.
Get a way in?
We gotta save them.
Bill?
I, I, I agree with you that it's superfluous.
Okay, yep. All right. All right, our next order's on the next page in regards to utilizing off-site mitigation that meets the above.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, in this, these next couple, can you go back to that official comment about the off-site mitigation?
Oh, okay.
What's the definition?
Right, right, and I can see that, and we need to, that's one that we need to work out a little bit, I think, so we can go right over those and address them when we have a little more counsel from our engineer on that. So. One of our last ones is going to be 6A?
So, right, so this, this has to do with the operation and maintenance report.
Line B 6A? It's the.
All right, so the only question.
Second to last page.
Will there be annual fee for that?
Will there be annual inspections in regards to post-development compliance? Because I, I saw that it was mentioned that we should be following up and doing post, post-development and long-term compliance in regards to this.
Yeah, I, I think it's pretty standard for their view of requirements of, you know, annual submittals of reports and that, you know, the board and your agency authorized to do periodic inspection, just needed to confirm that, you know, everything's functioning as it should. Well, I guess I could pose this question for Andy. Have you seen your thoughts on this annual fee question?
Yeah, Andy Glynn's, again, I think as the chair was alluding to, there's, there's a section 10 regarding ongoing site inspections, and I believe that a fee for the annual review of the operation and maintenance reports or inspection reports would fund the town either Operations Maintenance Department or the town's consultant to actually do those inspection reviews, and basically, it would require the applicant to make a decision during the design and permitting process whether or not they wanted to still propose a discharge to the town's stormwater system, knowing that that would require their ongoing maintenance and ongoing fee, where, you know, in most cases, it would be viable for an applicant to address stormwater on their own site without tying into the storm drain system in the right of way, but that would be a decision applicants would have to make. So I, I think it's appropriate to have an annual fee for systems that are tied into the municipal separate storm drain system.
That are tied in.
Are tied in. So I think that fee amount and qualifying when that fee is applicable still needs to be refined.
Mr. Chair?
Please.
And that gets back to my, to my point one and point continuing, is to what extent are people tying into the municipal drain water, stormwater system? And what's the applicability of this for much of the development that we see before the board?
A little, but then if we remove that whole previous section about off-site pollutant removal, then this isn't gonna be an issue, correct?
Yeah, well, my, my point is to the point at how many developments are we looking at? Where are we telling them to capture their stormwater on site? Are they actually contributing to the municipal stormwater system?
Correct, currently, we don't allow it, as far as I know.
So.
But this is, we're, the section in here is, the first section that we talked about is, is allowing it. So should that happen, then we should, the town shouldn't be stuck with covering the cost the long term, right? So if we keep in the section with off-site pollutant discharge, pollutant removal practices, then certainly I would think that an inspection fee and filing fee to check and maintain everything would be appropriate. If we don't, if we take out the off-site, then I wouldn't see that that would be necessary at all.
Andy Glynn's, again, I, I guess the, there'll be situations where an applicant would be developing their own property and then potentially asking permission to have an overflow pipe from their system tied in directly into the town's storm drain network. And that, that would be considered a direct connection to MS4, which I think those projects also would be applicable to have the long-term operation and maintenance reviews. There's a definition at the beginning of the proposed regulation that defines what a point source is. It doesn't have to be a pipe, it could also be a, a channel over land flow that goes right to a catch basin that's tied in. So again, there's gonna be instances where the amount of stormwater that an applicant is proposing to discharge to the town's system could impact the maintenance of that system, and then that's where the ongoing oversight is required.
Because we have a project in front of us now that's proposing something like that.
Correct.
All right. All right, do we want to go back and discuss, but I think there was, really, it's, a lot of our discussion's going to be on, on and off-site pollutant removal practices is gonna cover the majority of it. I think the waiver requests is already required under Section H, so just keep it in or remove it, I don't think it, it would matter in any sense.
Good question that I have.
Yeah, please.
Regarding the fee schedule, is that something, Tom, that we need to engage with either Finance Committee or the Finance Director on this stuff?
No.
Or even with the Select Board?
No, the Planning Board has ability to set fees.
Okay.
Agreed.
Yep, just, my thoughts were, if they were.
Technically, the town will be setting the fees if they approve.
Right, just thinking of consistency with any other, I guess, you know, that's what you, you guys had come up with, is making sure that they're consistent with other fees that we already establish with regards to applications and things like that, right?
Yeah, and the thing about a fee is, a fee cannot be a revenue generator for a town. Fee covers the costs to implement.
Covers, yeah.
So like I said, I, I, curating my research on fees and things like that, I'm looking at those people who are pragmatic and practical in, in their fee structure and looking at how it might pertain to ours.
Right.
And again, we won't want to be exempting, we don't want to be double-charging people that are already going through the review fees.
Right, right, that's, that's the, that's the, the whole thing with that, is make sure that we're not hammering applicants with.
Yeah, and my note in the margin says, consider waiving the fee structure where a project is already subject to a site plan or a subsidy.
All right, so I don't know where that leaves us. Mr. Glynn's?
I guess one more point I did want to bring up was if the town does end up removing the current Board of Health regulations, which is currently the only place that has specific rainfall amounts for recurring storm events, that's used for stormwater modeling, this regulation should cite a source to determine what those rainfall amounts are moving forward. And I'll write this up in the memo, but essentially, I'm gonna recommend that the town reference the NOAA data that's available. It's where Mass D E P is moving to formally, to cite that in their new stormwater and wetland regs. And I, you know, compared the data that is currently available from NOAA versus the Cornell Atlas, and the Cornell Atlas is very comparable up to kind of the, I think, the 10-year recurring storm event, and then after that, the Cornell Atlas was a little more, had higher rainfall intensities. So, you know, up to this data, I think the town's been covered for what their, you know, stormwater regulations had in place, but it'd be beneficial long-term for the town to cite a source that's updated by another government body and will continue to be updated with changes in storm events as those happen over the next decade. So I would just want to clarify what source is being used, and then also, I think, another item that the board brought up with some of these regulations, I think there's some under the Stormwater Management Standards section that are a little too specific for this, specifically on flow velocities within pipes or flow velocities within swales. I don't recommend limiting potential designs by applicants that much in this regulation where there's definitely gonna be instances where a pipe may have less than two and a half feet per second of flow, and that may be appropriate, so I wouldn't hone in that much. And then there'll be other instances where flow velocity's greater than four feet per second in a swell are appropriate if it's stabilized appropriately. So I think some of those items, I'll recommend being removed from the regulation, and then still something that will be reviewed as individual projects are proposed, but I don't want to have a laundry list of waiver requests for certain items like that.
Right.
That were regulated a little too much.
Yeah, because we currently deal with the NVAD, is that it?
Right.
Every time, right?
Yeah, so trying to avoid some of those, this regulation becoming outdated as other state and federal regulations are updated, so.
Other recent questions?
All right, this is a public hearing. Would anybody care to raise their comments, concerns, or questions this evening? Seeing them. Alex, is there anything you'd like to add?
No, thank you, Mr. Chair, and I think, I'm hoping our goal could be that, you know, Andy and Tom and I can work to try to get a more finalized form ready for the board to vote on it whenever your next meeting is. So to that end, Tom, what's the schedule?
I believe May 14th is the board's next meeting.
Andy, what are you, what are you thinking in terms of your timeline for comments and review?
Yeah, I, I think that would be reasonable for us to have a, circulate another round of comments and kind of compile our recommendations and then provide that to the town.
All right, well, that, that sounds good to me, Mr. Chair, and I'm willing to have a more finalized, sure, after you review on the 14th.
Thank you, Alex, we appreciate all the work you do. So the chair will accept the motion to continue the public hearing till May 14th? All right.
I'll make that schedule.
Room 1, Town Hall, 7:00 PM. Motion made by Mr. Robinson.
Second.
Second by Ms. Gasky. Further discussion? Seeing them, Ms. Gasky.
Aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Helen Sardillo says aye.
Helen says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Alex.
All right. Our next order of business is, a public hearing continued on the application of Weathervein at Silver Street LLC requesting a special permit and site plan review pursuant to Sections 3100, 3900, and 5300 of the Carver zoning bylaw located at 7 and 9 Silver Street in Carver, Mass. Assessors map 67, lots 4-3 and 4F in the Residential Agricultural Zoning District. The proposed scope includes the construction of six new triplex residential townhouses consisting of 18 total units. A continuance has been requested by the applicant. The board's scheduled hearing in May of 2024. They don't give a particular date.
On here that says May 28.
Yes, that can be under, it was a, this, English, but May 28th is the date we talked about, so if I may just speak to that.
Please.
So the folks at Silver Street are looking at retooling their project based on, you know, a number of factors. So the conversation I have with them was like, well, you know, I was hesitant to ask for a continuance because I didn't want to think the board was just, you know, we were just ignoring the board, and I, and I, my, my take is, you know, if we don't have anything new to talk about, it doesn't make sense to spend the board's time or your client's money to come in and talk about what they don't have anything to talk about. So they're, they're working through those particular issues. They're likely gonna be amending their plan significantly, so I just wanted to give them as much time as they could to sort that out. So that May 28th date is what we had put on the agenda.
All right. So the chair will accept a motion to continue the public hearing of Weathervein at Silver Street until May 28th, 2024, Room 1, Carver Town Hall, 7:00 PM.
I'll make said motion.
Motion made by Ms. Sardillo.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gasky. Further discussion? Seeing them?
Aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Helen Sardillo says aye.
Helen says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. All right. Our next order of business is.
John, can I speak?
We're having a bit of a tech issue here.
Sure.
And my extension cord is on so long, so if you boys don't mind posting our cable.
That's all right.
Now, we're good. I, I thought about that.
Our next order of business is, continued public hearing on the application of K&amp;G Development Corp., requesting a special permit pursuant to Sections 3800 and 5300 of the Carver zoning bylaw and a definitive subdivision pursuant to the Carver subdivision control bylaw for property located at 85 Wenham Road in Carver, Mass. Assessors map 99, lot 23-0 in the Residential Agricultural Zoning District.
Thank you, sir. That's the April 22nd, pardon? That's what's on the screen. Is that mine or yours?
All right, thank you. I'm Scott Farnar with Grady Consulting. Just here to talk about the revisions that we made since the last hearing. At the last hearing, there were some comments that came up specific to the abutting property, which is a cemetery. There were some concerns about the grading being a little too close to the lot. So, we made some minor adjustments to the infiltration basin in that area to leave a greater area of undisturbed land between the property line and our limit of work. We also added an additional silt sock and a silt fence along that property line, which I believe we discussed. And the applicant has also agreed to construct a fence along that property line. Beyond those changes, there were some additional comments from the peer review engineer, which we have addressed in a letter to the board. Most of those were fairly minor. I'd certainly happy to answer any questions.
Monitoring well? Have we decided on location, or have we talked about how many are necessary?
Hi, Andy Glines with Fussin' O'Neill. I don't believe we specified that for the detention base. I do understand that the board has required that as a condition for other similar subdivisions.
That should be a discussion between us, the Board of Health, and you.
Yes.
I have a quick question.
Please.
How wide is the access to the land in the back, the strip, the pathway there? 20 feet? I don't have the scale. I get 20 feet if the scale's...
20 feet is what it says on the point.
Okay.
Yeah, that sounds right. Correct, 20 feet.
Okay, it's not, okay.
And it will be clearly established, so there's no encroachment on that from 10, 20 years down the line?
Correct.
Path, or is it just going to be all trees in there?
So, that land will be, will be donated to, like the Conservation Commission. So, it's ultimately up to them what they would like to do with that land.
Question. But we do have bounds called out in the plans for that 20-foot strip.
We have bounds called out for all the major geometry points. We do not have bounds called out for that 20-foot strip.
I think it'd be very handy to do so, just so we know where it's at.
Sure.
Because things have a way of adding trubs and things like that planted on the property. So, I think the bounds, I'm not going to spend more bucks on it, but it's a couple hundred bucks if you set a boundary, so.
Otherwise, people'd be walking, thither and thither.
Yeah, we wouldn't oppose installing a couple of bounds there.
My thought is, if we're looking at the rear lot line, so two at the cul-de-sac and two at the end back of the lot lines, so we've got four points, make a box for that tag.
Sure.
Condition is recommended that observation pits for roadway cut and fill areas shall be performed prior to placement of roadway base, and results shall be submitted to the town and Fussin' O'Neill for review. Do we have the final word from the fire department?
I believe we do. I think that the plans, the April 8 plans, reflect the fire department's comments.
They do, correct.
And those will be added as conditions? Or requirements? So, we won't be waiving it?
Correct. We removed the waiver for the cul-de-sac configuration.
7.4.3. Do we have any, anything from the D P W in regards to the proposed use of the, the well as an overflow? The catch basin?
I don't believe we have.
Fussin' O'Neill didn't coordinate directly with the operation maintenance department for this project, but we did recommend a condition to have that structure inspected and cleaned, as well as the outfall for that. It's a catch basin with a culvert under the road and a end wall on the opposite side. So, it's a isolated component of the town stormwater management system. And I guess I'll let the applicant speak to whether or not to accept that condition to clean that.
Yeah, excuse me. Yes, so that was suggested as a condition, and we don't oppose it.
Okay, because we want annual cleaning and a filing with the D P W to show that that's, that's been, maintenance has been done on it every year.
Annual cleaning.
Well, inspection, it is a catch basin, right? So, it catches a lot of leaves and various other things. And we want to make sure that, because we're also looking at a reduction in the 100-year storm to, from the federal to the state. So, we want to make sure that that's cleaned regularly and on an annual basis. And then that report, you can just file it with the D P W. Simple as that. We did it. We inspected it. Everything looks good. We cleaned all the liquor bottles and leaves out of it, and it's good to go.
Okay. Just, just to go back to clarify about the rainfall data. So, wasn't, it's not a, you just want to clarify, you said it was a waiver from the federal to the state. It was actually from the, from the old Board of Health regulations. It sounds like we're just, we're just eliminating. So, this, it is designed fully to the state regulations.
But you did hear us that we're going to be looking at upgrading these and making it more uniform and universal. So, I don't know that the board has any issues with it. But as long as inspections and maintenance is done on an annual basis, I honestly, as long as the D P W doesn't come down hard on us, I'm okay with it.
Oh, you go ahead. Andy Glines, I wanted to weigh in on, I agree with the applicant that the 100-year storm event from the state data is a, less total rainfall than what the Cornell Atlas is included in the Board of Health regs. The Board of Health regs are still currently applicable until the new stormwater reg that the town, or as the planning board ultimately approves. So, I still wanted to include that as a waiver, just to make sure that it was documented. And then I think, related to the conversation earlier in this hearing, where under the MS4 regulations, discharge from this stormwater basin would be considered a direct discharge to the municipal separate storm sewer. So, that, that's kind of where the annual requirement for inspection would come into play.
But I think it would be good practice not to have the town have to deal with it. They're expensive to come, and if it needs to be replaced, I know there's several in town that are well past the useful lifespan. Waiver has been requested that all changes in grade exceeding five tenths of 1% should be connected by vertical curves. Five, five tenths of 1%?
I didn't write the regulations.
Okay, all right. Due to the length and profile of the proposed road for this conservation subdivision, Fussin' O'Neill recommends approval of this waiver. Waiver has been requested from the requirement that streets shall not intersect, not a street at a gradient in excess of 2% for a distance of at least 100 feet from the intersection of the street centerlines due to the length and profile of the proposed road. And some of the concerns we had as a board, I think, Fussin' O'Neill recommends approval of this waiver also. Section 9, we just discussed that. Condition included to inspect and clean the existing catch basin grate and sump, as well as the pipe outfall on an annual basis. Did you pass eight? Right, actually, it should be noted that no site preparation, tree cutting, filling, grading, or other work done in anticipation of subdivision approvals shall be performed prior to definitive sub, plan approval. I only skipped over because I noticed that it's already on the site plans.
Okay.
And so, it's written in stone. Board of Health will review your onsite sewage disposal. I noticed you put in the call out for the street signs. A waiver requested for the NGVD, pretty standard. We discussed it earlier. This is one that comes up all the time because it's outdated. We use a more modern system. Mr. Bot, are we comfortable with the signature block just being on the two pages?
How many sheets have we, thank you. How many sheets is our, is our plan? Five? Seven?
So, this, this is an eight-sheet plan set, but looking at previous plans that have been approved by this board, typically only the, the cover sheet and the lotting sheet are what's recorded at the registry of deeds.
Well, and so, I have a couple takes on this. First off, there's a 62-page plan over here with a signature block on every page of the planning board's going to be signed. 62 pages, five signatures, all you folks. Not all of those get recorded at the registry, because the registry charges a bunch of money to get those copies back out. I like having a signature block on each of those sheets. So, when we go back and look at the plan of record, is this the draft? Is this the final? So, I'm sort of keen on that signature block, but I'm pretty flexible.
I'm, I'm okay.
As to how we do that. Now, keep in mind, you guys might feel like two is fine after you sign those 62. So, I'm, I'm, I'm pretty flexible on this, as long as we've got, you know, the plan set that we know when we go to look at, is it built to, to, to the plan? That we've got something to reference. This is the actual plan. So, what's your, what's your take on the signature block?
I prefer signing every page so that we know that every page is the page that was signed, that was approved, that was in, locked into perpetuity.
And so, we, but we will not be recording all those pages.
Right, yes. But it, it marks it as, this is what we approved, we signed.
Nor will we need a revision of this plan with a signature block on all of them. Just put it on the Mylar.
Correct. Okay.
Religion has been revised. We think we can, you've adjusted everything that we can keep all work 10 feet away from the property line where the graveyard is?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. We are requiring, asking for a fence around it, but you are going to have to go through the Historic District Commission to get a certificate of appropriateness in regards to that, because they have oversight over that. I think there's a $10 fee on that.
I do not know.
Along, along the, the common property line?
Yeah. Or do you already know what type of fence you're going to put in? Something that we can see, that we can approve, that might or might not be appropriate for the, we've put in a, something similar to what's there?
Yeah, we haven't made a final decision on the exact type of fence that's, that will be installed. But, but typically fences along the property lines don't really revolve, don't involve any type of approval, as long as it's...
Well, it's a cultural and historic landmark for the town of Carver, and that's, that's, I mean, if you know what you're going to put in there, see, I don't want to step on their toes. And that's, that's, that's the issue is...
If it's on their side of the lane, that's one issue. If it's on the cemetery, I mean, that's...
Right, but if they put up, if they put up an eight-foot, eight-foot barrier fence that, you know... I would, I would think a split rail or something appropriate.
Our applicant just had vocal cord surgery, so I'm speaking on his behalf. He's writing notes on the board for me. But he intends to match the existing fence.
Then that's, I would think that would be fine.
And, and to Donald's point, it's a great point. We typically install fences not right on the property line. You know, we typically install them, you know, maybe half a foot, a foot. And so, in this case, it might make more sense just to install it fully on the Wenham Road property and not have to go to the...
I just don't want to see an eight-foot tall privacy fence going around it, because that's going to take away from it. Please, Mr. Bot.
Absolutely matching the existing. I talked to John Woods about the fence. He said it's been there probably 20 years. It's been there since before he got here, the vinyl fence out front. So, it's not 50 years old. It hasn't quite got the historic preservation status, but it's been there for a long time. So, I think, to Don's point, it's their fence, not the cemetery's fence. And they are going to set it, as most good fence folk do, and there are some good fence folk out there. They survey the property. They put the fence a foot or so on their property, so they got an ability to work on both sides of the fence to fix its next.
As long as the side, the two, well, the front isn't part of your issue, but the other side is, is similar. I don't think there should be a problem with it. And across the back, if you want to put a, that, that's not, I don't, I personally don't care what goes back there. But, you know, some people might not want to look out over that particular view. So, I, I will leave, I think, I don't know if the board agrees or not. We can discuss it. But I would leave that up to your, your decision.
Okay.
Resolve this, resolve that. The waiver of a 100-year state storm event. We discussed that already, and our engineer doesn't seem to have an issue with it. Stormwater management design calculations. Request a waiver to use the 100-year state storm event instead of the 100-year rainfall depth listed in the Town of Carver Board of Health regulations. But are we the overseeing authority, or is the Board of Health the overseeing authority?
All right, so I'll let Mr. Bot weigh in on the applicability of being able to grant that waiver. But I guess I, I think the waiver should still be granted where the subdivision rules and regs still do reference the Board of Health. So, that might be an avenue where the planning board can grant the waiver, because it's referenced in the subdivision rules and regs. I'll pull up that specific section so we can reference it in the decision letter.
Yes, fine with me, absolutely. Because the Board of Health is soon to be out of the business, and we've got the ability to waive that. And the board can waive any regulation if it's in the public interest. And I think someone can make a case that the public interest is let's not have two confusing rainwater calculations. Let's have one, the one we're going forward with.
I think the last one I have here is, "The test pit data provided in this submission only extends two and a half feet below the bottom of the proposed BMP, and does not extend to the four-foot requirement. Condition is, oh, and does not appear to have been witnessed by the town's agent. A condition is recommended to require an additional test pit shall be performed at the proposed BMP location that extends at least four feet below the bottom of the proposed BMP. During construction, the results shall be submitted to the town and Fussin' O'Neill for review." I think I, we've covered all the questions and concerns and some of the comments that we received from the public in regards to this. Does the board have any? Any questions or concerns or comments? Did I miss anything, Andy?
We received the response to comments and updated plan set. We haven't issued a final memo, but I think the board and the... We haven't issued a final memo, but I think the board and the applicant went through the response to comments letter thoroughly enough this evening, so comfortable to say that the applicant addressed our comments. I just want the Mr. Bott, Town Planner, to get a chance to finalize the decision letter with the waivers and conditions that were discussed.
Is there anybody here that would care to speak? Public hearing, any questions, comments, or concerns? I think, I feel comfortable closing the public hearing and then we can pick up the issue at our next meeting, once we've received draft and Andy's final comments. All right, so if there's no further discussion, the chair will accept a motion to close the public hearing on the application of KNG Development Corp. requesting a special permit pursuant to sections 3800 and 5300 of the Carver zoning bylaw and a definitive subdivision pursuant to the Carver subdivision control bylaw for property located at 85 Wenham Road in Carver, Mass. in the residential agricultural zoning district.
I'll make that some motion.
Motion made by Mr. Robinson, seconded by Ms. Sordello. Mr. Gasky?
Dr. Gasky says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sordello says aye.
Ellen says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
So we'll have a draft decision put together in the board of vote at our May 14 meeting.
May 14?
Yes.
Okay. But the hearing's closed. The hearing's closed?
Yes, the hearing's closed, yes.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, gentlemen.
And we are continued. And we're continued.
Continued.
Right. Well, the hearing is closed.
Yeah, the hearing is closed, so we don't have to continue the hearing. But, but we will vote and go over the conditions and everything until May 14. Our next order of business is on the application.
Hope you're singing soon.
Is a public hearing on the application of Bridgestone Development Incorporated requesting a special permit and site plan review pursuant to sections 2230, C. 3100, 4341, and 5300 of the Carver zoning bylaw located at lot number four, Ricketts Pond Drive in Carver, Mass. assessors map 32, lot 1-4 in the Spring Street Innovation Zoning District. The lot will be comprised of a 7,494-square-foot commercial building with associated driveway, parking area, closed drainage system, septic system, and utility connections. Storm water from the site development will be directed to an infiltration basin that was designed to accommodate runoff from the Ricketts Pond Business Park definitive subdivision. Received some information, it was requested to be placed into.
Can't you do that?
Placed into the record? I think the board has a copy of it.
Yeah, check this out under the trouble tonight and not just. Perfect. Out of that way.
Nice, thank you.
Part of your trip again.
So, good evening, planning board members. Eric Shoemaker with McKenzie Engineering. So we, we were in receipt of a review letter dated April 3rd from Fussin O'Neal provided in front of you. We revised the plan set. It should have a latest revision date of April 10th, 2024, in the top right corner. Along with that, we submitted a response to Mr. Glynn's comments from that initial peer review letter. With that, we submitted a plan set, drainage calculations, some technical specifications for wall light fixtures, and a framing and sheeting plan set prepared by Package Steel Systems to give an idea of what the front facade and the building height is going to look like for this building. So I'm just going to quickly walk through some of the changes we made to the plan, although they were all pretty minor in nature. So, starting with the site layout plan, we added some traffic pavement markings at the direction of Mr. Glynn's and we dimensioned out this rear loading area. That rear loading area is going to be 45 feet in width, so that can easily fit the box truck that we're using as a design vehicle to pull in and back up into those loading areas. Specified the dimensions of this dumpster pad to the rear, that's going to be 10 by 20 feet. I added some proposed doorways. The triangle-looking symbol is signifying pedestrian doors, about 3.3 feet in width, and the overhead doors are labeled as well to the rear of the building. The cement, cement concrete pad has been specified for the propane tank and that propane tank has been moved within the limit of the proposed fence for maintenance. So that wraps up the changes on Plan C1. Sheet C2, the grading and drainage plan, some additional spot grades were added adjacent to the accessible parking spaces. So those parking spaces for handicapped individuals in the ramp are located, you know, towards the northern side of the building, northern central side. So we added some greater detail with that, remember, within ADA specifications for those parking spaces. Additional spot grades were provided along the sidewalk as well. So that's going to wrap up Sheet C2. Again, the propane tank was moved and I'm going to get into the landscape plan a little bit. It was a point of concern during the last meeting to provide a greater front landscape buffer. So the majority of the plan changes revolved around increasing that front buffer and pushing the development back. So our initial submitted included two feet measured from property line to the edge of pavement. We increased that to seven feet. That's in line with what has been previously approved for this subdivision. Lot 5 has a seven-foot front landscape buffer. Lot 3 has a 6.6 front landscape buffer and Lot 2 across the street has a two-foot landscape buffer. So we, we think we're in line with what's been previously approved and it should, you know, look like a nice continuation of front landscaping as you're, as you're driving down the road and seeing, you know, the, the same separation between the property lines and the parking areas. So with that change, you know, most of the work revolved around pushing everything back and, you know, doing so, the septic system had to move back. We're pretty much right at that setback for the 150-foot from well, and that's a regulation by your Board of Health. And we also recalculated all of the drain calcs, the rims and inverts for the, for the drainage main that's running towards the rear of the property. So also included in the plan set, you should have the, as I mentioned earlier, the framing and sheeting plans prepared by Package Steel. That should give an idea of the building height as well as the 15% requirement for the windows and the front facade. The only thing I'm going to add to that is we are planning to do a storefront-style front door. So I provided a calculation in the response letter, I assumed about, you know, 75% of that front door is going to be windows and I included that in the calculation spelling out that we do have that 15%. So that's, that's a quick rundown of the changes made to the plan set since we last met. I can, I can answer any questions that the board members may have.
You mentioned storefront, but again, there's no public access to this site.
No public access, it's just the style of the doorway. And that's, that's similar with Mr. Fuccini's lot, the Formay lot out up front of Ricketts Pond, and they use the same styled door and windows at that location.
What are we putting out front for landscaping? Are we putting, are we trying to put in evergreens to block the view of the parking lot?
Yes, we have some pin oak trees spaced at, was it 35 feet? We also have red cedar trees, red cedar trees, and white pine trees. So there's three different types of trees and a couple shrubs there. Again, it's, it's the same sort of landscaping specs I've included on Lot 5 and Lot 3, so it should look pretty uniform as you're, as you're driving down the road.
If I may make a comment. Seeing as this is my last night, I don't care, I'll make this comment anyway then. Looking at these plants here, he's got a lot of nice bushes and plants and trees, and I take a ride down through the center of Carver and I don't see one town property along the sidewalk that has trees, bushes, plants. You go in front of a police station, there's not even a sidewalk on one whole section of the road. I mean, this is nice. Wouldn't it be nice if the town properties along Main Street looked as good as these?
Yeah, the library used to have a lot more trees, but.
Not even trees, just bushes along the road. Even the elementary school, there are few bushes way in, on the inside of the parking lot, but not along the streetscape. They do have their berm there to cover the back of the loading dock with the whole school.
Yes.
Again, doesn't face the street, but it's sideways, when every other building is supposed to face the street, but you know. Se la vie.
So what you're saying is that the extensive amount of.
Yeah, say, yeah, let the town do what they're making other people do.
Right, actually, we're, we'll be waiving the landscaping requirements or partial on this property, so.
I don't know, can CPC use historic recreation of bushes? Historic.
I agree, it's part of the rural character of the town. Do we have, we've received everything from the fire chief?
I believe we have.
We haven't done a site walk on this, though. The wall pack lights, I notice you see, are those motion sensitive?
Yes, they are.
I thought I saw.
You gave us a memo on those.
Yeah, I thought I saw that.
Did you get this one?
I did, yes.
Yeah, wall pack lighting, motion activated, not to exceed 11 feet.
And I believe I saw that you did, you did get the height of the building, it was 40 feet?
Yes, let me confirm that. Yeah, 40 feet.
All right, condition is recommended to confirm that Ricketts Pond Drive will remain The applicant shall confirm that there is no public access to the building? Right. You do not propose it. Condition based on the number of employees. You're asking for, again, 11 parking spaces in front of the building?
Yes, Andy Glynn's with Fussin O'Neal. Under section 4365, we did recommend a condition to include one monitoring well for this site. Some other lots within the subdivision, we have recommended two wells for those lots, but those were, do, those were lots that were closer to the infiltration basins and the pond. So we believe that one well on this lot will be sufficient to provide the town the opportunity to sample groundwater and stormwater conditions throughout the subdivision.
All right, overhead doors, is there a requirement for catch based under those or tight tank?
There will be a tight tank for the development. I show that on the utility plan towards the southern end, and I just call for a 2,000-gallon industrial wastewater holding tank, and that will be pumped, cleaned, regulated to all the regulations of the state.
All right. When can we schedule a site walk? When can you have the entryway in the building staked out and roughly the rear of the parking
Our survey crew typically needs about a week, week in advance, so I would say is the, towards, you know, the end of next week. Does that work?
Yeah, that, that works for me.
Does the week of April find active on us?
Yes, yep.
All right.
Are we going to make a schedule?
Yeah, we're going to schedule the site walk that week.
Yeah, we have to make sure that any new members have a chance to be sworn in before.
So you probably should do it.
Towards the end of the week?
Yeah.
What time is Thursday?
What time would you confirm?
Um, well, I'll be out of work for the next 12 weeks, so I'm going to be looking for a ride for Mr. Bott because I don't think I'm going to be given permission to drive a vehicle for quite a while.
All right. Mr. Gasky, how's your schedule look?
Let's see here, right now.
A good time for you?
Morning.
Okay. Yeah, morning, morning is always best.
Nine to 10?
Yeah.
Any preference?
Nine.
10.
10, all right. 10 o'clock, Thursday, the.
May 2nd.
May 2nd.
Okay. May 2nd, 10 a.m. And just to confirm, you would like four corners of the building and probably the rear edge of pavement?
Yeah, the two rear edges of the pavement, the entryway, and the other corner of the lot out front.
Okay.
I spoke too soon, I have a follow-up doctor appointment at 9 o'clock, so.
Due at 11?
Well, I can also go, Mr. Bott can just bring me out there when I get back, if, at his convenience.
Due at 11:00?
Urban control plan, public access, snow removal, did we, I know we discussed it before, what was, what was our plan on that?
Yeah, we designate snow storage and any landscape islands that can fit it, and there should be ample space towards the rear here within the fence line, but any snow that can't be stored on-site will be transferred to a snow disposal facility at the cost at the cost of the property owner.
And the rear area there will be berm to slope towards the...
Yes, yep. It's berm to slope towards the, the parking lot.
Mr. Glines, are we missing anything?
We received the response to comments submission. Fussin' O'Neill reviewed it, and actually, I just, I'll be issuing that tomorrow to the town and the applicant, and essentially, they addressed all our comments, so the only items that we left in the memo will be our recommendations regarding waivers and conditions of approval.
We've been asked to include public comments in this from Community Land and Water Coalition. It is a legal motion, so I'm not gonna read it out loud, but it, it will be available on file, and we received some other documents in regards to this also. Could we please provide, Mr. Glines, with the technical assessment from those documents?
So are you talking about the email that we got from Environmental Watch and those five attachments?
He, I don't think they're all appropriate, but...
Yeah.
In regards to the sizing of the infiltration basin, and there were some pictures that included hose pumps and such, and, and I don't know what those were in regards to.
So what I would recommend, because typically, when we have someone who has a comment, we read their letter, and note their, their concerns. To the extent that we would do a technical review on someone else's document, that would be unusual.
Well, the, the problem is that they were, the hose pumps, unless you have, you can tell us what the hose pumps were in regards to...
So Mike, would you mind coming up to it, though?
Yeah.
Please, yeah. So I, I suppose the question would be...
Mike Ficini.
Where are we pumping water from and to?
We're not pumping water anywhere. I think what it is, these are the only hoses that I've seen out there, is the building across the street, which is the electrical supply company, the white building, the new building on the left, they have a couple of hoses that are into Basin One. Those have nothing to do with us, so I don't know what they are, but other than that, there's no hoses anywhere.
Right, well, my question would be, and I know, maybe it's, it's, it's not specific to this particular Lot Four, but to the site as a whole, why are they running hoses and why are they pumping water?
I, I have no idea.
I think that's a question for...
I'm not sure, I know that they're in the middle of doing a sprinkler.
Nope, but, you know, it, it was sent to us, it's part of the record, all of those documents should be part of the record.
So I'm gonna read the letter into the record.
Please do.
And to the extent that what we're talking about is Lot Four, and not an entire subdivision, and not an entire portion of town. Dear Chairman Sheehan, Members of the Planning Board, Conservation Commission, Earth Removal Committee, with a copy to the Select Board and State and federal agencies, this is to urge the Planning Board to deny the site plan review under zoning bylaw for Lot Four in the Ricketts Pond subdivision. The attached letters and documents are a summary of key issues. They include environmental impacts never studied under MIPA. We are unable to attend tonight's public hearing. If you do not vote to deny, we rest, we request that you vote to continue. There are too many serious violations of this site. A team of independent, multidisciplinary engineers and specialists should be hired by the town at the applicant's expense to investigate all of them. This includes exposing the public to carcinogenic silica mine, sand, uh, public to carcinogenic silica sand. The federal government is using new regulations to protect mine workers from this sand, but carver allows the public to be exposed on a daily basis. Feel free to contact me if you have any questions, Meg Sheehan. So the board's requirement is to regulate to their regulations. So if it's not in our regulations, then we don't have any jurisdiction to impose those sort of conditions.
Right, I think the concern was whether or not the, the infiltration basin that, that Lot Four will be using is contributing to some of the issues, and I think that's why she raised it. But again, it's a, it's a very long document, and I think the concerns should be addressed as if they were put in front of us by any, any member of the public.
Yeah, but keep in mind, we can only regulate what's in our regulations.
And we regulate infiltration basins?
We do, which Andy reviews.
Yes.
Andy Glines with Fussin' O'Neill. I, I haven't received or read this document yet. I'll coordinate with Mr. Bott, but it sounds like it might be something that should be discussed under the definitive subdivision approval and conditions, not necessarily for an individual lot within the subdivision, but either way, Fussin' O'Neill is involved as a town consultant for both, so I can coordinate with the town planner and the operations and maintenance department to figure out the best way to address the concern that was brought up by the public.
I really just wanna make sure that the infiltration basin's gonna meet with the design standards in regards to the totality of the project, so we're adding another project onto it. I just wanna make sure it's not, it's not gonna be an issue. But again, you're the expert, and of course, we would defer to your opinion in regards to that.
And I do include a statement for individual lots that are submitted within this subdivision, referring to the original stormwater design that was submitted as part of the definitive subdivision review, and all the applicants to date with their individual site plan and special permit submissions, as they've come in, have been updating that overall subdivision stormwater management plan, and we, Fussin' O'Neill continues to review the updated reports and make sure that the two infiltration basins are still sized appropriately. So I, I think that's covered in our comment memo, but I'll certainly take another look and look at the public's comment on this to make sure that we're addressing it.
Excellent, thank you, Mr. Glines.
And I may have a question for Eric. So in this subdivision, McKenzie Engineering has, have they done the site plan permitting for all of the lots within this development to date?
That's correct.
So the nice thing about this is we have some consistency, that we don't have several different organizations, and you also did the, the review for the subdivision itself?
Yes.
So they've captured that information, we've got, you know, pretty consistent stream of information. You know, sometimes in a, in a subdivision, you'll have, you know, six or seven different folks doing plans, and that's fine, but I think that there's, while we check everything, and Andy checks them twice, there's some level of comfort in the consistency of having the people who did the plan for the subdivision to be looking at what they're adding into that subdivision and making sure that, you know, we're capturing our stormwater on-site and keeping where it's supposed to be. But we'll look at them.
And just to add, we designed this to the stormwater management standards. You know, each submission, we included, you know, 200-page drainage report where we went back through, we recut, we re, rechecked the sizing of all the pipes in the entire development, we recalculated the pre and post-development, peak rates and volumes of runoff at all the design points, we ensured that the basin still has a foot of freeboard towards, you know, as required by the stormwater management standards, and the, the board, as well as the peer reviewer, has now had a chance to review this basin. I think this is the fifth lot, we've been in front of you guys, so five times, plus the subdivision design. So with that, you know, our, our firm getting a chance to do, do really the same drainage report, you know, update it, but five different ways, we believe we got it right, and it's designed to the, to the standards.
Thank you. Anything further to add? Questions, concerns, comments?
Yeah, quick question. So you, are, are you involved with the inspection that's supposed to be happening next week? Or, or Thursday? Thursday, there's some sort of inspection going on?
Yeah, are you talking about Lot Three?
For the, I guess, I'm not sure if it's Lot Three or if it's the, if it's the infiltration basin or...
That's, that is a, an appeal of the order conditions for Lot Three, so that's conservation and a DEP issue on a separate lot that has nothing to do...
Right, I know it hasn't, it's, it's not affecting Lot Four, but I'm curious as far as the, the infiltration basin...
The infiltration basin was approved under a separate order of conditions that was not appealed. So this is just to discuss Lot Three, and the only, the notice of intent for Lot Three was in order to have a portion of the parking lot in the 100-foot buffer zone.
Right, okay.
But this will be using the same infiltration basin, correct?
That's correct.
All right, this is a public hearing, do I have anybody in the public? Questions, concerns, or comments? Please, if you'll excuse us, Eric.
Good evening, Mary Ellen Williams, 67 Wareham Street. I do not know why that woman would submit that letter this evening and cause further delays for this particular lot. We all know, it's public knowledge that she has her sights set on this subdivision, but if this was of such great concern, why wouldn't she or any, or one of her many people come forward and oppose it in person? Mr. Ficini has gone through many, many delays for this particular lot, and I just think it's very unjust that everything's done by the book on this, similar to other lots in the subdivision, which was approved by this town, but yet we have her throwing rocks at this, at this subdivision right now.
You're not gonna take personal offense?
I am taking personal offense, because this isn't right.
This is a public hearing?
Mm-hmm.
Everybody in the public...
And she should be here.
I'm, I will accept public comments from anybody, whether they are here or not.
Yeah, but I hope that you can see what her intent is.
It doesn't, anybody can submit a public comment. We can't hold public comments to the requirement that you have to show up and make a public comment.
I understand that, but do you understand that her comments are based on the subdivision, not on the lot, primarily?
Right, but whether or not that they're based on, on what they're based on, part of the problem is, it involves the infiltration basin, and it's our job to make sure that the infiltration basin meet the requirement.
Understood, but it's another ploy to delay us.
And that's, that's all we're looking at here, and we will submit, we have already submitted them into, her comments into the record, just like we would with any other public comment.
Now, will you remove her comments to the subdivision as it's in, in its entirety and only focus on this particular lot?
I am, I have no intention of going through and going through people's comments to the board. Either they're relevant or they're not relevant, you can take it as you will.
But they'll only pertain to the law, correct?
She submitted public comments.
Yeah.
It is not my job to go through and strike out issues of public comment. It is a public comment, and it can, it covers a wide range, and I, I have...
I understand that, but what you're going to address will only be pertaining to this lot, correct?
We are only addressing issues pertaining to this lot.
Okay.
And that's all we have done, and that's all we will continue to do.
But that's not what she's doing, so I just wanna confirm...
Right, but that's, she's not the board, she's not on the board, she doesn't represent the board.
I understand that completely, and I mean no disrespect by what I'm saying. I'm just frustrated, because Mr. Ficini has been encountering delays upon delays primarily due to her and her people, but now we get to this lot, which hadn't had any problems, you had some revisions that you wanted to, wanted them to make, they did, but now she throws in the whole subdivision.
That's not delaying this process, that, if, if she submitted something that we felt was specific to this process, that, that this lot, that raised questions on this lot, and we needed further information, that would be our right to get it. But currently, nothing that has been submitted by the Community Land and Water Coalition has in any way affected the timeline in regards to this project or any other project in regards to Spring Street. It is not. How is it now going to affect this timeline? We've scheduled out our, our site walk.
You're not going to ignore what she said, clearly, I mean, you have to address it, that's your responsibility, I understand that.
And we, I think we addressed it this evening.
But I just wanna make sure it is primarily focused on Lot Four, and not the, the person across the street who may have pipes exposed, because that has nothing to do with Lot Four.
No, that has nothing to do with Lot Four, but we don't know that, but the, on the other hand, we can't tell from what's going on where these water pumps are coming from or going to, so we ask the question. And we also ask the question like we would in any other development, the more you build on it, the more stress and strain an infiltration basin will, will take, and we wanna ensure that now that we're reaching maximum capacity for this particular site, that the infiltration basin is going to maintain its integrity. We would do it with any other site. We appreciate public comments, and we're not gonna go back and 1984 and truth speak public comments. People are welcome to include any public comment that they desire, and whether it is relevant or not, is, is up to the board to decide.
Okay, fair enough.
We have strictly stuck with this Site Four and this, we have continued to do so, we have not extended any timelines or deadlines, and as a matter of fact, I think everything had been moving smoothly.
Well, there, there were some delays, and I think you're aware of that, but, I mean, that happens.
Not on our end?
No, perhaps in a review end, right?
No, I don't believe there were.
Okay.
It's a big project. Are you saying that our, our engineers are holding up the process?
There was a delay in the review process, I do believe.
I don't believe there was, and if there was, I wasn't aware of it, and the board would have nothing to do with any sort of delays.
I'm not saying the board has anything to do with it, I'm just saying that that was what happened.
I am unaware of it, and as far as I know, it never happened, it didn't happen to this board, and I'm, I am unquestionably certain that our, Fussin' O'Neill has not done any delays and would not delay a project.
I'm not saying they're deliberate delays, but they were delays, right?
Not, no, there were no delays. I am unaware of any delays up until this point, I could not be any clearer, and that, that by saying that we're intentionally delaying something...
I didn't say you were intentionally.
Well, you're saying we're delaying something. There have been no delays on this end, everything has moved smoothly and purposefully.
Delays happen, I didn't say they were intentional.
What?
There's a big diff, I said delays happen, but I didn't say they were intentional.
Okay, well, that's, that seems...
That letter is intentional to cause a delay, but any delay here has not been intentional.
Well, there's no delay in...
She doesn't even live in Massachusetts, Meg Sheehan.
It doesn't matter, there's no delays in regards to this particular public comment, there have been no delays in regards to this project. Everything has moved ahead smoothly and, and very well, it's a big project, and I think the board has done well, I think we've moved ahead appropriately. See, and it's your public comments, too, you have the right to make those public comments. But on the other hand, I, I think you're mistaken in thinking that on any side of this table, in any way, shape, or form, a delay in regards to this or any other public comments or issues that might be happening are the responsibility or the fault of this board.
I did not say that. That is not what I said.
You, you're saying there's delays?
Yes, I didn't say on behalf of the board.
Right, and, and I'm saying there wasn't delays in any way, shape, or form.
All right.
And we've moved ahead smoothly, we had questions, comments, and this is a public hearing, is this what our second, third on this project?
So the hearing opened on the 26th, so this is month in to the process since we opened the hearing.
Again, it's a public hearing, you're welcome if you have any further comments or concerns or questions.
No, I'm good, I just needed to address that, because it seems to be a pattern, and it's very frustrating.
A pattern? Could you elucidate on that?
Meg Sheehan.
Oh, well, it's, we have no affiliation with Meg Sheehan. That's something you'll have to take up with her.
Oh, I will, I will.
Excellent.
Yeah, I'm not saying you have affiliations, I'm saying those are further delays now.
They haven't delayed our, our, how we're working, our concerns are our concerns, her concerns are her concerns.
Yeah, but you read them and you address them.
Of course we do, they're public comments.
Right, right.
We're, it, we would be irresponsible not to read or to take in consideration... We're, it, we would be irresponsible not to read or to take in consideration of public comments.
That I agree, correct, correct, but I just hope that you can see the pattern here, that's all. We're all very well-versed as to what is happening with that subdivision.
I, I really don't understand or know the extent of which you were talking about. We received in the entire subdivision as a whole, three, four, public comments from Visheehan, she showed up at a couple meetings. She hasn't in any way affected or delayed the process of this board.
Okay, fair enough.
Anything further?
No, I'll, I'll leave it there.
Excellent, thank you.
I respectfully disagree, but I'll leave it there.
All right, a further questions or comments? Seeing none. The Chair will accept the motion to continue the public hearing on the application of Bridgestone Development Incorporated requesting a special permit and site plan review pursuant to Sections twenty-two thirty, see thirty-one hundred, forty-three, forty-one, and fifty-three hundred of the Carver zoning bylaw located at Lot Four, Ricketts Pond Drive, for a seven thousand four hundred ninety-four square foot commercial building with associated driveway, parking area closed, drainage system, septic systems, and utility connections until May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, seven P.M., Room One, Town Hall.
Who makes that motion?
Motion made by Ms. Sordillo.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gasky, do we have further discussion?
I just have a question, why are we continuing the public?
We're doing the site walk.
Because of the site walk?
Yeah.
Okay, as long, is it's because of the site walk?
Well, it wouldn't affect anything, they'll run concurrently anyways. Mr. Gasky.
Aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sordillo says aye.
Don Liam says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. Thank you very much, Eric.
Thanks for your time.
Refresh the planner's memory that site visit is May second at nine or ten?
Thursday, May second, that I believe you mentioned ten o'clock would be best for you.
I think we went with ten.
Okay. And we're doing the entrance, corners of building, and corner, corners of pavement.
Uh, front corners of lot, that cuts you up, the corners of the building, and then the rear extent of the pavement. Excellent, thank you, Eric.
Thanks for your time.
Thanks.
Sign Route Forty-four definitive subdivision milars and covenant? And, which, we can wait to sign those till after the meeting?
Uh, well, actually, I've got a couple things, uh, so.
And we lost him.
So we have two things to sign, the sixty-two pages, I'm gonna set up a room for you guys, so you can come in at your leisure, because like I said, there are sixty-two pages, so I have to line, line this thing up on table so the signature blocks are out there so you can kind of move along. Wow, so we're gonna sign it, but likely not tonight, but I do have the covenant, so there's two things that go with the subdivision plan. So we filed the subdivision, uh, plan, we filed the covenant as well, so I do have a copy of the covenant, all the board signatures on that, so I have that, that I have to sign tonight, and as far as inking the milars, it's gonna take a couple days to get that done.
Could you do that like at the fire station or the police station on all the tables they have?
We'll probably just use Table Four, Room, Meeting Room Four downstairs, because I got a big table down there.
All right, if you could just go around the whole, one of those rooms.
You'll let us know when that's ready?
Yeah, it'll be ready in the morning.
When you're gonna give us a week block time?
Yeah, it'll, it'll be ready in the morning, essentially, so, you, you, we'll, we'll get that.
I only have a few days.
I was gonna say, it'll be available at least Thursday, right?
Yeah.
Okay, good, because I'm out of town tomorrow.
Well, you approved it, so if it was today, tomorrow, after you left office, it's still your vote on it?
Yeah, on that, and it's a majority of the board, so, yeah, at your convenience, John. So, so this is the covenant that has been filled out, so, and how subdivision sorts, we've talked about before, is we have a subdivision plan, and the subdivision plan basically says you cannot build on a lot, you cannot sell a lot until the planning board releases that lot. So the folks have to build the roadway, they have to be inspected, and then we release the lots, until that time, what the covenant says is exactly what I just said, you can't sell a lot, you don't get to do anything until the board releases them, and at that point, the board does release lots, we'd usually have a bond, a performance bond to ensure that the remainder of the subdivision is done, because there's things to clean, usually the top coat didn't get put on, so this is our ticket to making sure that nobody sells anything prior to it being ready for prime time with the development in. So if I could, it is, page five, I'm just gonna put the signature block up there, so if you folks don't mind signing this for me, we'll get it with the rest of the plans.
Which, which subdivision is this for?
This is Route Forty-four, oh, I guess we should have talked about this, so this is Route Forty-four definitive subdivision plan. So subdivision was approved, there was no appeal, and how that process works is we have the town clerk sign first, she does the certification, there's been no appeals, so the town clerk signs the subdivision plan first, and then everybody else signs it because they know there's been no appeals to the development. I was trained by a very rigorous town administrator in my years in Kingston, and I wouldn't dream of having the planning board sign something until the clerk said it was okay and there's been no appeals.
Should I have not signed this?
Say again.
Should I have not signed this?
It's fine.
On these other plans, couldn't you get a rubber stamp just to put the signature block on, or does it have to be, I mean, you think just have a big rubber stamp and just put five lines?
Yeah, so, so different folks do different things, in, in Falmouth, in their procedures, they basically said, the planner can sign all that stuff and we don't have to, so in Kingston, the board signed all the subdivision plans, it's up to the, whatever the local customer is.
We only have one signature on this, right?
Yeah.
Just the one signature?
Yes.
I can see that, that you should sign every single page though, because that's when somebody pulls it out, they'll swap a route.
That's, that's, Connie does the, he, he goes through and initials every page.
And like I said, while we'll be signing sixty-two pages on the signature block, they don't record sixty-two pages at the registry, chances are about sixteen pages, and those pages are usually to lay out the grading and things like that, so we know what's on record, and anybody else who's looking at the property knows what's on record, but the details as far as how they plant a tree and all that, fascinating, cut-and-paste sort of stuff, that typically winds up at the back of subdivision plans, those aren't things that necessarily need to be recorded by the registry, but.
Our next order of business is discussion and possible vote on removing zoning article to increase lot size from the town meeting warrant.
I, I watched the meeting and I found it interesting that they were perplexed that we voted to put it on the town meeting warrant, but we didn't approve it as a board.
Endorses.
Endorses.
When we voted to put it on the warrant, we voted because, at the time, I believe, that we felt that it was a larger issue than five people could decide for the town. Typically, the select board takes no action on zoning articles, so, and we have the authority to put an article on there.
I mean, they were totally confused as to why we would, as it was, you know, this was brought forth, why should my one vote or one other vote put it down, and the article should go before town meeting, whether we endorse it or not, if we, I mean, as a board, it was, you know.
I, I feel it's up to the town to decide, I mean, it's a larger issue, and, you know, it, it was recommended by SERPED in their May tenth, twenty sixteen memo to the committee, and it was kept off because it had failed at the two thousand four town meeting, but things have changed, the state is coming after us, they want more development, and frankly, it, it raises concerns on what this town can handle, there's no infrastructure, there's no town water, there's no, very little services, we don't even have assurances from Middleboro that would, what we're getting up north, in North Carver is, is guaranteed.
Right, but it's, you know, that's all for discussion, but as far as putting it forward to town meeting, why not?
Right, why not, I don't know, they, yeah, the select board takes no action on it, so I don't understand the big concern, let, let the voters decide.
So, I'd be happy to talk about some of that, so, I was at the meeting, the select board asked me to, to attend, and their basic question was, well, why would this be on the warrant if the planning board didn't support it? So, as I laid out the process, we start off at the beginning of the day with what might be on the warrant, we submit those in the timeframe required under the, while the warrant's open, and then we schedule the hearing to see what is gonna come out of that, so we don't know prior to the hearing what the outcome is gonna be, so that's how it gets on the warrant. Their question is, well, if the, the board wasn't gonna support it, why wouldn't the board take it off the warrant after they had this discussion? So, in my conversation with them, I said, I don't really think the select board can remove something from the warrant, I said, it's exactly like a ten taxpayer petitioned article, we can't touch one of those, we can't change it, the board obviously can amend their article, but I don't believe that they have the ability to remove from the warrant, I said, but the planning board does, the planning board could say, yeah, we looked at this, we talked about it, and we decided to recommend, not recommend it, so I think the planning board is perfectly within their right to say on a majority vote, yeah, we talked about it, we looked at it, and we're not gonna vote it. In the interim, as I always do, I, I, there's a lot of research that I have to go back and look for things, and, like I said, this is from the two thousand one plan, so I did go back in the archives and find a few things, including appendix from the master plan. This is not posted online, it's on, on the computer, it's in a hard copy of the book, and this is something I found out after the fact in looking at this, and this is a sheet from, this is from Marlene's files from two thousand fifteen, I think, and this was at the beginning of the upgrade of the master plan process, and here we see, in the public education section, increase lot size to two acres, that that had failed. Further, I went and took a look at, just digging a little deeper into that, I came across a master plan update presentation that I believe Jack Hunter did, and in that, they also talked about here, increase lot size to two acres, and the planning board, it says failed, so those were things, I think, when we had this initial discussion, it was like, well, we didn't get to those, and in further review, it looks like, well, maybe we did, and they didn't pass muster, as I've said before, increasing lot size to two acres is a, is a twentieth-century sort of strategy for preserving land and protecting folks. It's such, fall by the wayside, most folks do not look at increasing their lot size to two acres, it was in the two thousand one master plan, it came out of the two thousand seventeen master plan, and that's probably more research I should have done while we had the hearing, when we had the discussion about putting it on the warrant, because I had a couple conversations with Connie who said, yeah, this is in the master plan, but I couldn't find it, because I was reading the two thousand seventeen master plan, not the two thousand one, so it's totally up to the board as to what they want to do, but it wouldn't be out of the realm of practice for a board to go, yeah, we looked at that, we talked about it, the majority of the board didn't think it was a great idea, we're not gonna recommend it, and the board could take a, an additional motion to say, yeah, we'd like to remove it from the warrant, and that's what we talked about tonight, is, you know, the potential to discuss and possibly vote to remove that from the warrant.
In, in the true American tradition of politics, I would suggest you kick this down, can down the road to the next meeting with a new board, and let the new board decide.
I would disagree because we're the ones that voted on it, and we voted to allow the public to make the decision, the planning department.
We can vote that again, but.
The planning department recommended in two thousand nineteen, and SERPED recommended it in their.
I don't think anyone recommended moving, increasing this to two acres since two thousand one.
It was, yeah, in two thousand nine it was recommended, the planning department put it forward, but it didn't pass through the planning board, and then in the May tenth, I believe, twenty sixteen memo from, comments from SERPED, it was also recommended, but it was passed on by the master plan committee, so, and that's, that's where it ended up. So, again, I think leaving it to the public like we initially decided is the best way, that five people should not be making the decisions for this town, and I think it's important that the public has the opportunity to weigh in on this, it's on the warrant.
So this is something that has not been voted on by the town, it's just been, different boards have.
It was voted on in two thousand four.
Have decided not to push it forward?
Yes.
Okay, that's the question.
If, it did not pass in two thousand four.
At town meeting?
At town meeting.
Okay.
But there's no, it doesn't, the meeting minutes don't reflect why it didn't pass or what the case made then, it just said did not pass.
So what's the board's action on this?
No action.
I thought we already, I thought we already voted on it last week.
So, so the board voted not to recommend it to town meeting, the ask, so, so the ask from the select board was, well, since the planning board didn't recommend this, does the planning board want to remove it from the warrant? I said, well, we'll ask them, but I don't believe the select board has the authority to remove something from the warrant.
Right.
Or the authority to ask us to remove it.
On, on something that they take no action on, I would think it just seemed, it's, it's very strange.
I'm comfortable just leaving it the way it is.
I am too, thank you.
We voted whether to recommend it or not.
Yep, and we didn't, and it wasn't recommended.
Click the clicker and the thing whether we're for it or against it.
But we're not the be-all, end-all, that's, that's the residents of this town, and they should, they have the opportunity to make the final decision. Town Planner notes, we sign.
So, by acclamation, the board is not taking a vote?
Our last vote stands.
Okay, I just want to understand.
I would, I would think that would be appropriate.
All right, great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Everybody sign their policy papers?
Nope.
Make sure, make sure you return to Mr. Bott if you, if you plan.
I know I came in late, but.
All right, I do have another announcement as well.
Yep, please.
So, well, tomorrow, the permitting office will be closed for lunch on Wednesday, April twenty-fourth, for Administrative Professionals Day, you'll find this sign out in front of the planning office as you come to, for anybody who comes tomorrow, the sign says, so we can celebrate our fine staff who do so much for all of us, lunch is the least that we can do for them considering all the things they do for you and the town of Carver. The office will reopen at one thirty, thank you much for your understanding, if you're a contractor who's up at nine thirty-five, you're up after your bedtime, but I want to let you know that we'll be closed, and the office typically is not closed for lunch, so tomorrow, Administrative Professionals Day, we're going to lunch, don't come at, before lunch, uh, don't come at lunchtime for things that you typically would do.
Saturday is voting day here in Carver, I hope everybody shows up and gets out and vote, I am going to request that we pass on the approval of the minutes, because there were a couple mistakes in there, I haven't had a chance to, to go in and fix them. Other than that, is there any further discussion of the board? Seeing none. Seeing none, Mr. Williams, this is your last meeting. We want to thank you for your service. And certainly for your commitment to the board, so thank you very much. That being said, the Chair will accept a motion for adjournment.
I will make that motion.
Motion made by Ms. Sardillo. Do I have a second?
I will, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Williams. Mr. Gasky?
Aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sardillo says aye.
Ellen Williams says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. Thank you all very much, and have a good evening.